Good afternoon, I am Trenice Riggs, School Board Chair, and the administrative, informal, and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at four o'clock PM on this 28th day of March 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboardschools.com/meetings/live or on broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Cowan, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Morton, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Thank you. We're going to start with the A, School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Do any School Board members have anything to share? Ms. Anderson.
I have an announcement, and it's, it's, I may say this again later in this evening, because this announcement is a correction for some misinformation that I wrote about, to several constituents that wrote to us about the Valcel implementation, et cetera. But in my last comment, I actually responded to several constituents, and I, you know, of course, you know, we all do this, we, we, we write out things and then we copy and paste it later on, so we don't have to keep writing the same thing a million times. So, but I actually, you know, the correction I want to make is to several emails where I recently responded to these constituents, and in my response about the Latin Honors designation to our students, that, the designation, I said that they received the designation printed on their diplomas. It's not, and then I found out recently that that's not true, we don't print it on their diplomas, but we do, however, send out that designation, that Latin Honors designation, with their transcript. So, for anyone who happens to be watching now, who I sent that information to, I want to correct that, because I don't want someone to think that I gave you wrong information about those designations being printed on diplomas when they're not. I was told that if we want that as a board, we would have to first figure out how much that would cost for the additional printing. But for now, they are sent out with the transcripts for students, and I just want people to hear that, and I want the board to hear it too, because you all may have read that as well in some of my remarks. And, and I may, I may say this again this after, later this evening when more people are watching. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Weems.
Yes, I just wanted to briefly report on, on the Ad Hoc Workforce Development Committee, and I will type out the minutes, and if anybody wants the minutes, they can surely reach out to me. But we did meet March 20th last week, and attendance, in attendance were Carolyn Weems, Trenice Riggs, Sarah Lockett, and from the city, Taylor Adams and Vice Mayor Rosemary Wilson. Ms. Lockett gave a brief presentation, because she had already presented to City Council about, you know, kind of what we have and some future possibilities. Mr. Adams discussed what, on the city side, what the city needs, and as far as, you know, qualified workers, and he really keyed on manufacturing jobs, auto body collision repair, and hospitality. And then we had a discussion on possible barriers for technical and career classes or students attending those, and then we talked about the purpose of the committee, to promote awareness and need for career and technical education, to partner and collaborate with the city and the Department of Economic Development, to engage the business community and other stakeholders in this discussion, to examine best practices and model programs that allow qualified workers to be prepared for the workforce of the city, and to examine possible legislative changes that sometimes cause, you know, barriers for our students. And the committee members, we decided on, on what would make a good, well-rounded committee for this, and we've got two School Board members, Carolyn Weems, Stacy Martin, City Council, Rosemary Wilson, Rocky Holcomb, the Deputy City Manager, Taylor Adams, the Director of Technical and Career Education for us, Sarah Lockett, the Chair of the General Advisory Council for Technical and Career Education, Amy Mallinson, and to represent the manufacturing industry, we've got Gunter.
Visenseal.
Visenseal, to represent auto body collision and real estate industry, Mike Siphon, the Workforce Council, Sean Avery, Hotel Motel Association, John Zirkle, the Medical Industry, Howard Kern, and Toddwater Community College, Dr. Kia Hardy, and our next meeting will be April 17th.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. Also, let me add to that. So, at first, Ms. Wilson wanted to do a resolution, but after, you know, explaining to her again that this was an ad hoc workforce development committee of the School Board, she understood it, and so we, she said, okay, we've already have our two, and she had talked about it the night of the meeting, which was going to be her and Rocky Holcomb. And so, I said, we had not decided, we had discussed, because we had received a very detailed, kind of like resume, from Ms. Martin. And so, we discussed it, but we had not brought it before you guys for a vote, and we don't want to do that, and have the same, you know, misunderstanding. So, what I want to ask you tonight is, do you want me to put this under information, so we can give this information again that Ms. Weems just gave us? Or do you want, or we can put it, if there's no objections, we can put it under? Action? Number 15, which is action, and go ahead and vote on it, and vote on Ms. Martin and the rest, you know, Ms. Weems formally, okay? So are there anybody, any conversations? Well, I see Ms. Brown, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Anderson.
I would like to see it on action tonight, please. Thank you.
As would I. I concur.
Ms. Manning?
I'm fine with that, but if we could please get a written motion or, or information written, so that we all are on the same page on what we're voting on in advance of the meeting.
Got you. Thank you. We will have it written. Ms. Lynetti, so will we make that either Ms. Lynetti or Ms., or Regina, if we can make sure we have it written down, okay, while we talk about it? Any other conversation, or?
Just for clarification, that's for a future meeting?
That's for tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight, action tonight. We had a lot of discussion at the last meeting, and I just wanted to make sure there were no objections to bringing it tonight before action. Okay? All right, well, thank you. And with that, oh, the other thing I needed to ask you, I sent this information out to you guys a week or so ago about Access College Foundation, and I didn't hear anything back. So is there anybody that really wants to do this? It's a foundation, we meet, how many times a year, Dr. Spence? Six? Four? Every other month, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a foundation, it's like the Virginia Beach Education Foundation, okay, it's a foundation. And they make, and they, they raise money, it's very influential people, I'm going to let Dr. Spence say more about it, if you, in case you have more questions. I did attend the meeting last Monday at Oscar Smith High School, and got the, the information for you guys, if you want, if someone wants to do it. If not, I will, I will represent us. But this was the one that we took off of our committees, and then Dr. Spence brought to us, I guess in January or February, that they really wanted to see us represented again back on this foundation. Okay? Ms. Melnick? And is that it? Ms. Melnick? Okay.
Is there a financial responsibility for the board member?
No, no.
And nobody wants to do it? Nobody has asked to do it?
Nobody, nobody has responded to that email. So I didn't, I don't want, I don't want to not give you guys the opportunity. So if there's somebody that wants to do it, okay.
Nobody else wants to do it.
Okay? Is everybody good with that? All right, so what, we need, I guess we need to vote on that too, because that goes with our committees. Ms. Lynetti?
Can we put them together?
That's what I was wondering, can we put them together in that one motion? Are you guys okay with that? Ms. Manning?
Well, just want to be sure, we have on PRC, voting tonight, to add that to our bylaws, so we need to make sure we vote on that first, before we vote on the access.
Right, right, and that does come before action, but I, Dr. Spence?
Well, that's, that's.
It's actually under information, we don't have it on action.
Yeah, I mean, that's under information anyway.
Okay, so we don't have the ability to vote on it tonight, then, since it's not a part of our bylaws?
You could do it next week.
Right, next meeting.
So you want to do it next meeting for the Access College?
The Appointment Act is Foundation, let's do that next meeting, we can do the ad hoc workforce tonight.
Tonight, correct. Okay. All right, let's do that, then, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Okay. Okay, so now we have our B, website update. Welcome, Ms. Allen, our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer.
Okay, there we go, okay. Good afternoon, Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. As you know, we launched our beautiful new website at the beginning of February, but you may not have realized that this was a multi-year process. I'm delighted to welcome up Jason Nichols, one of our DCCE coordinators, who oversees our website and was the lead on this project. He's going to walk you through why we chose to launch a new site, as well as show you a few important features.
Welcome, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. As Ms. Allen shared, we are here to talk about how we rebuilt the websites and the data we used to rebuild the websites. I promise you, data sounds boring, I'll make this fun and enjoyable best as possible. So to remind you, the older version of our website was challenging, it was difficult to navigate for our community, for ourselves, we had only 10 language options, the site mapping was inconsistent, so if you were a user and you were looking for something, you probably wouldn't find it where you think you would find it, which these are, which goes into the lack of ease of use. And our web team, for the webmasters, if I was working on the Division website, and I got a service desk ticket to work on Rosemont Forest Elementary School, I would have to log out of the Division website, go to the school, log into the school, do the work, log back out, then log back into the Division website to continue my work. So it wasn't very efficient, and of course, the technology was a little outdated. In 2019, INSPIRA National School Public Relations Association did a communication audit, and this communication audit had approximately 20 focus groups, which at the time, members of our School Board participated in, and they came up with pretty much the same conclusion is, we're not serving our stakeholders, where there's a lot of scrolling, there's a lot of clicks, it's hard to find, and more importantly, we weren't really serving our, our ADA community. So we want to change that, but to change that, the INSPIRA recommended that we continue to refine the design and the functionality of the website to meet our needs. That was in 2019. In November 2020, I was hired, and I was given this audit and said, hey, can you help? Yeah, I can help. But first we need to look, exactly, first we need to look at the data. So I want to look at what, what pages people are going to, what are the trends, what devices are they using, what language options are they asking for, what, what are we seeing, and how do we help serve that need better? First take the analytics, but to get to analytics, I want to go a little deeper, which is using a heat map program. Using a heat map program, that first on the left there is with the different colors, red is hot, green and blue is cold, so what are our community looking at first, what are they going to first when they're using their cursor? That middle button, or I'm sorry, that middle graphic is, how many clicks are people using when there's a hyperlink on a page? How many times are they clicking that? Are they using it? Are they skipping over it? And then that third on the right graphic is more of a skeleton graphic, more, kind of like a, an infrared graphic, if you will, are they actually touching the things on our page? And what we found out in the 17,500-plus pages that we just have on the Division, not the schools, just the Division website, is we're, we have pages that weren't really being accessed, and the information we had available, nobody was clicking on. To take it a little further, we want to get in front of our community, so partnering with our Family and Community Engagement Team, we got in front of a lot of Family Voice groups to get their feedback, how can we help? What are you looking for? What is it that you're going to the Division or the school websites for to actually help you? We got in front of our students, as student groups, the same thing, what are you using the websites for? And then we did the same thing with our principals. Principals, what do you want your communities to look at? What do you want them to know? And then how do we help you?
This time, yeah.
I'll give you a minute to look at those.
I like the student voice groups. Yeah, the student comments are great.
They were honest, yeah, they're honest, right? So taking this information, what's our approach? Well, we need to create new websites, refining what we already had wasn't going to work. So we need to redesign our websites to better serve our community, but better also market the business of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So reading clockwise order, using the analytics from the voice groups, the heat maps, the data, taking that information, and then how do we site map the, that information, which means, what information is imperative, and where should that live under the navigation for the website? We streamlined that data, removing outdated and unvisited and dead pages from the 17,000-plus pages. Doing that, we managed our existing 87 websites at the time, while also building these 89 new websites. During that time, we did ask principals to please limit the amount of changes they needed on their school website, so that we can manage the, the burden. And then we also wanted to make sure that we built a School Board website and a website for the Environmental Studies Program. And then on February 3rd last month, we launched 89 new babies, which was fantastic. I just talked about the School Board website, and the reason why we wanted to build a new School Board website is we wanted it to look consistent to the Division and the brand, but in our Family Voice groups, as you just saw, we wanted to make sure the information was transparent, easy to find, easy to navigate. Now, on our Division page, and on every single school page, on the top right is a Quick Links button, and the School Board website is available on every single one of our community webpages for the schools. And you have your own URL, which is schoolboard.vbschools.com, so the community can go just to that, they don't actually have to go to a school or to the Division website to find the School Board site. Talking with our parents and our families, they wanted to find the information quick. How do I find the policies? How do I find who our board members are? More importantly, if I don't have Channel 47, how do I watch the School Board? So we made it easy. On the homepage, it's one click. Here's how you can get it. So to recap, with our new websites, they're visually appealing, we have 30-plus language options now, where before we only had 10. The information's easy to find on every single homepage, on the top left is a search bar, where you can use the search bar to find what you're looking for. For us as webmasters, we only need to log into one place, and then I have access, or we have access, to every single one of the websites, so that we can quickly make changes and it's more proficient, and the technology is more current. Of course, if you need any assistance, we'd be happy to go through the website with you together, but do you have any questions? I told you I was going to make it fun.
Thank you. I'm excited to see the improvements and all the work that went into how you decided to make it more user-friendly. I know that the work has been completed, I guess, for the Division site. Is there plans for the individual schools to have their sites, I don't know, consistent in where you would find activities at this elementary school, and this elementary school, or middle schools, et cetera, to have that overall consistency across our Division?
Absolutely. So for me, it was imperative that the Division page and the school pages looked almost identical. So if I have a student that goes to Green Run Elementary School, and a student that goes to Plaza Elementary, or Plaza Middle School, I'm looking at the same website, and I know where to find that information. So those pages do exist now. Now, with every website, websites are organic, information changes daily, and we are keeping up with that change now. Change is also new, and a little terrifying, so getting out in front of you guys, getting out in front of the public, showcasing what we actually have has been beneficial, but we're still building that, that activity's necessity, if you will.
Okay, and just to follow up, does each school have a person, I guess, who's designated as, I update the activities calendar, I update, or does that come through Central?
Sorry, each school has a dedicated person that will upload their calendar information. That calendar information will be on their homepage, just like on the Division homepage for us. Each school also has, it's called a technology ticket assistant, if they need a change on the website, that technology ticket assistant will put in a change that's needed or requested, comes to us, and then we make that change as quick as possible.
Thank you. I wanted to elaborate really quickly. As it relates to just how quickly we can change things on every single website now, so if we have, you know, inclement weather or something, and rather than them having to log out and back in to go to each website and change that, our team can now make one change and say, apply to all, and it's out there much more immediately, which is really nice as well.
Perfect. It would take us about an hour, if there was a snow day, on the previous platform, to update every school's page, that there's a snow day, where now we can immediately do it to all schools.
Ms. Brown?
So I was actually going to ask how people can access the different languages, and then I went right into our website, and I see it on the bottom right, so I'm going to go ahead and yield, but that's great, and that it's so accessible, so if you know anybody that needs a different language, you can help direct them to there. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
The website is beautiful, it's so easy to navigate, and honestly, sitting in this seat and looking out every other week, I see the hardest-working people anywhere. It's a, there, there's no doubt why people look to us, and copy us, and want to be us, and you were the cherry on top. This was, this is, it is really fantastic, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And just want to say thanks to Jason and his team, because it really is a beautiful thing, so thank you.
C, High School Scheduling Update, welcome, Mr. Matt Delaney, our Chief Schools Officer.
Maybe I can't handle it, let's see. Let's start all over. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Dr. Spence, members of the board. We're here this afternoon to provide you with an update and the progress in our new high school schedule. We're going to share the overview of the purpose for the new schedule, challenges that have been faced, and initial positive impacts of the schedule, as well as adjustments that we're, will have in place for the 23-24 school year. The two visual representations illustrated on this slide really represented the impetus to change the high school scheduling model coming into this year. As you know, our school division's graduate profile, located in the center of our strategy map on the left, drives much of our deeper work with the school division, and is anchored in our strategic plan encompassed to 2025. The symbol on the right side of the slide highlights the work that's been taking place around redesigning the high school experience for our students. High school redesign really became a primary focus for high school leadership during the 2019-2020 school year. As a result of this work, the four pillars of high school redesign were developed, as you see on the slide. Components of each pillar are clearly identified and encompassed to 2025, and in many instances, have been a part of our work with the, as a school division for several years. It's important to note that each pillar is supported by three foundational principles of equity, social, emotional learning, and innovation, really essential that we continue to highlight that principle of innovation. As we continue to leverage the lessons learned in our post-pandemic reality, we have the ability to develop innovative solutions in order to best serve our students' needs, to ensure that they're future-ready. This slide should look familiar, it was in the presentations that were done last year, that really the goal of the flexible schedule is to maximize opportunities provided to students, to meet their academic and career goals, and exhibit the skills outlined in the graduate profile, skills that will serve them, whether they decide to enroll in post-secondary education, enlist in the military, or seek employment around graduation. If you visit our high schools, you'll hear them often refer to them as the three E's. The intent is for the flexible scheduling model to provide increased opportunity for students to take advanced courses, access elective courses, and provide the opportunity to participate in work-based learning. This schedule will allow students to participate simultaneously in advanced courses, work, while enrolling in one of our centers. Under the previous schedule, students often had to decide between one or the other. And this schedule will also provide an opportunity for more students to achieve an advanced diploma. Under the previous scheduling model, we had students that by the end of 10th grade were unable to obtain the advanced diploma. And then finally, the flexible schedule, it provides increased opportunities for students to recover lost credits, thus increasing their opportunity to graduate on time. Keep in mind, the schedule for this year was really approved by the School Board in January of 2022, so that's a short turnaround for schools to put that in place. So we really wanted to ensure that we had a strong fundamental schedule to open up the school year. It was developed with the idea that core classes would be scheduled on the four-by-four model, but we do have some exceptions. Classes specific to special education, AP, IB, our performing arts, and some of our other specialty programming were primarily scheduled on the AB schedule. And then finally, we needed to ensure alignment across the Division to mitigate the impact in any student transfers, and then want a student being left out, because that course was not offered to another school that they went to. So during the 2021-22 school year, we did four presentations on flexible schedule to the board. It started with the retreat in July, and ended with board approval in January of 2022. You may recall, at the conclusion of every one of those presentations, we shared the expectation that the schedule would continue to evolve over time, that we were not finished with approval. We were essentially entering the initial phase of this work, and to plan a continual review was necessary for us to meet the ever-evolving needs of our students, our staff, and our community at large. The master schedulers at the high schools did an outstanding job of putting a schedule together to open the school year in September. Yes, there were stressors, but kids were in classes and they were learning, they were just dealing with the change of a schedule. A meeting was held in October with master schedulers and members of Central Office, to include Department of School Leadership, Department of Teaching and Learning, Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, Student Support Services, Instructional Technology. Really, the purpose of this meeting was twofold, one was to celebrate with our master schedulers on the great job that they did, but was also a time of reflection, to see what, what lessons were learned, what were some best practices that were utilized at some schools and not others. And what we found in that meeting was it was invaluable, is we were able, in many cases, to make immediate adjustments to concerns that they brought forward, and then we were also sharing ideas. This process has continued over the past several months, they've had monthly meetings as groups of principals, assistant principals, and student support services, to ensure that we can make the adjustments heading into the next school year, as the registration process for students will conclude in March. As with any change, we know that there's going to be some challenges that come along with this. The top of that slide of challenges is what many of you have heard, especially at the start of the school year. These challenges were not unexpected, as such as the pacing adjustments required in the four-by-four schedules for both students and teachers, the ability to pair content courses and AP/AB courses. Several teachers have been challenged with teaching both four-by-four classes and AB classes. In the first semester, students had to really adjust, become more familiar to a schedule that might include a combination of four-by-four and AB classes as well. And the final challenge is sometimes the impact on attendance of missing school on a four-by-four model. We've also experienced several positive impacts on the new schedule, we had 246 students who made the decision to graduate early. As you heard in a previous presentation from Dr. Lockett, students earned over 7,000 industry certifications in the first semester, this puts us on track for a significant increase in industry certifications from last year. We're receiving reports from teachers that students retain more information on the four-by-four, engaging in the course. engaging in the course on a daily basis with the num, smaller number of courses to focus on has been beneficial for several of our learners. We're seeing the impact the schedule has on students' ability to retake a course during the year. And finally, in the current schedule, teachers are able to focus on a smaller number of students. We have seen a reduction in the number of teachers that have one hundred to one hundred and fifty students on their current class roster. So let's take a few moments to hear feedback from building leaders and central office staff.
We have multiple students, students with disabilities, students who are speaking a different language, students who are learning that school is important to them, white, black, otherwise, later in their academic careers. And we have to keep a focus on the data that is telling us that groups of students are not accessing the most rigorous courses that we believe will prepare them for whatever next step they want to take. For example, we gladly promote the number of students who earn an advanced studies diploma in Virginia Beach. At the same time, if a terminal math course for a student is Algebra II and that same student is telling us that they want to go to college and the beginning course for that student in college is pre-calculus, then we've unfortunately set that student up for failure because they are not ready for pre-calculus. They ended with Algebra II. So we have to literally raise the bar in some of our core sub, core subject areas that although they're meeting the graduation requirement, based on their, I'd say, area of interest or post-secondary plan, the E that they're going to choose, enroll, enlist, employ, entrepreneurship, that we need to be very strategic with the courses that they're taking. So then what can we do with this flexible schedule to ensure that students have had those experiences leading up to that point?
The challenging part of the four-by-four was that we did it during the pandemic because we scrambled and then we started trying it. The pacing is hard. It's hard to take what you've done for seventeen years and squish it and go faster. The challenging part about teaching the AB is that sometimes we have things at school, for example, advisory, that always fall on a B day. So your B day class is always shorter than your A day. And that's great for taking attendance purposes, but it's hard for planning. I don't find it challenging to teach both schedules because I teach two different preps. So I have environmental science on the four-by-four all year long. I have chemistry on the AB.
The beauty of the four-by-four is the potential to take two math classes in a single year without having to double up at the same time or you take one in the fall and then one in the spring. So for instance, let's say I have an Algebra I student, for whatever reason, was not accelerated in middle school, but gets into that Algebra I class and is just knocking out of the park. And this Algebra teacher's like, what are you doing in this class? Like, why didn't someone in middle school realize how brilliant you are and get you in one of these accelerated pathways? It may be as simple as got overlooked, could be he's a transfer kid from another school, but it's how do we fix this? Because the sad part is there are five courses between Algebra I to get to calculus. So if that student were never to double up or go to summer school or do any of those things, they would literally be locked out of ever taking AP calculus in that high school pathway. So that student now has a couple of years to make that decision. So maybe as a sophomore, he doubles up geometry and Algebra II trig to allow himself to get to calculus as a senior. Or maybe as a junior, doubles up Algebra II trig and pre-calculus to once again get there. So those possibilities just weren't there without that four-by-four. It would have been summer school, VBD-C, something like that, but it would have been extra and beyond. So it just allows for a ton of flexibility, autonomy and options for students that just otherwise, it would be, you take this as a freshman, I know where you're going to be as a senior. Now it's what do you need? What are your career interests? What are you interested in? Who do you want to become? And no matter where you were, whether you had three credits coming in or zero credits coming into high school, we can get you there and we can match that pathway for your desires.
So when you think about the flexible schedule, I like to think about it as a puzzle. Everything with the master schedule is very logistic of, there's a database and all kinds of different things that can go into the development of the master schedule. So if you think about, our schedule used to be maybe a five-hundred or a thousand-piece puzzle. When we've added all the components to the flexible schedule that we have this year, we've pretty much moved that to a two-thousand-piece puzzle. And as you know, if you've ever done a puzzle, two-thousand-piece puzzle, very high detail. So you've got to pay very close attention. It takes a little bit longer. So time was really an essence of ways that we now will have more time as we approach this new schedule because we've learned so many things. So you can expect to see different iterations of schedules from different, from schools and throughout the year as we fine tune, pay attention to these pieces that will open up doors for our students.
So I think it's been a challenge, just like any new initiative. I think it's, it's had its growing pains for teachers and probably for students as well. Just anytime anything new happens. What I have noticed, especially with my geometry classes, we have a state test called the SOL here, which most of my students in the fall had to take. And I felt personally as though them having just a three-month span from the beginning to the end of the year, I felt it was a lot easier for them to recall information from the very start of the semester. Whereas in previous years, when we had a year-long class in May, trying to review some of the things we talked about in September and October was pretty tricky.
So one of the nice things we were able to do, which was a challenge with the schedule, but we know again, going back to supporting our teachers, is we gave our core SOL content areas a common planning block. And we also were able to do some alignment where same grade level had planning block. So you might have world geography, which is ninth grade and Algebra I, which is ninth grade. Not only do they have common planning, but they both have first block common planning. So knowing that these teachers have the same expectations on getting students to pass a test, even though they might not have the same students, they're doing similar things with data and reviewing and meeting with teacher. And there might be some of the resources that are coming in from outside of the building, either teaching and learning or some folks reviewing data. Those, those conversations can happen together. And I think like you, you pointed out in the question, that supports them and that makes them feel, you know, builds confidence in our teachers as well.
My AB class is a chemistry course and right now it's filled with kids that are in Salem's Academy and they're on a different schedule with their dancing and their music and their acting. So I feel like I'm really fulfilling a role for them by offering them a year-long science course that they may not otherwise be able to take. My environmental science is lower, younger kids, freshmen. And I think the pacing for them, having just four classes to focus on, four content areas, it's fast, but they remember it better. I think retention of the content is so much better for the younger kids on the four-by-four. So I see the pros and cons of, of both. You know, one's faster, but the kids are maintaining that, that level of rigor because they don't have big gaps in the A and B schedule. But I like teaching the AB chemistry students because I know if I didn't, they wouldn't have the opportunity to take chemistry because of their academy schedule mixed in. And they're not all academy. Some of them are in AP courses, which also run on that AB. So I feel like I'm really filling an important role that our school would need so that kids can get those advanced diplomas.
The flexible schedule was quite challenging for the academy program at Salem High School. We have five strands and each strand have required courses that need to be taken. Some of those courses are already coded as year-long courses, which fit fine into the schedule. Our music and vocal courses were semester-based courses. So those did create some obstacles that required us to be very creative to complete schedules. We are aware of those challenges now and we are working with the Department of Technology to rewrite codes to make the puzzle pieces fit together better. And those year-long courses work without compromising the content of what is delivered in the course itself.
So we knew we had different needs for the scheduling purposes for students, but we also had needs to meet for our teachers. And so of course, we always say we make decisions based on what's best for students. But if our teachers aren't supported, they're, they're not going to be able to give their best to our kids. So we looked at what courses needed to be on the block and what were going to be four-by-four for our school and our student population and our teacher expertise. And then we tried to balance that out.
The beauty of four-by-four, because you can take classes in both the fall and the spring. If a student needs a fifth class or even a sixth class, whether it's computer science or any other math course, we can map it out where you don't need summer school. You don't need to take stuff after school or online or virtual Virginia. We can do it in, on campus, in the classroom, in your spilling and get those five or six classes done. So the beauty of it is allows any student to accelerate to the endpoint that they desire.
Biology is one of the areas of concern for us and we're trying to improve student results. And so we know that students take a SOL test, which they also need for their graduation requirements. And now they're taking that test earlier. So in the past, we would have had all of our students in biology in an AB schedule, take the test in June. Maybe they have an opportunity to retest, maybe they don't. And then based on that, they would go into the summer if they needed remediation or more support. Worst case scenario, they go, come back the following year. The four-by-four has allowed us to put students in to term one, they take the test and we've been able to remediate them. So we have a group of students who passed the class but failed the test and they are auditing the class but preparing for that SOL test in June. We have another group that failed the class and they're back in there. And that's a win-win for us because not only are they getting the verified credit towards graduation, but it also helps us with our state accreditation as well.
So the combination of where we are with data and student groups not accessing rigorous courses, we need to keep that in the forefront because from an equity standpoint, this flexible schedule helps that if we stay committed and strategic with those decisions. And I think we all agree that work-based learning and service-based learning helps students develop the skills that they need to be successful after high school. And we need to stay committed to that process too and that those two go hand in hand.
So this slide here captures a lot what you heard in the video, but also adds a little other details to it. It's, we've had several adjustments looking at the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Schools are really looking at the ability to pair content courses with AP, AP, AB, AP classes. You saw a model of that in the chemistry course at Salem High School that was created to support academy students. This ability to pair should redo, also reduce the number of teachers teaching both four-by-four and AB. It won't completely eliminate it, but it should reduce that number. We will continue to provide opportunities for students to complete graduation requirements earlier so that it clears room and a student's pathway to engage in work-based learning. I'm thinking, Ms. Weems, what you shared earlier, that opportunity and space for kids to get engaged in that work that I know you guys are exploring. Dr. Ronnie Myers-Dobb and her team and OPEC are working really closely with school leaders on potential adjustments to best serve our students with disabilities. So we will see an increase in four-by-four and AB offerings to meet the individualized needs of those students. As you heard in the video, Bayside High School developed a schedule allowed for common planning time for teachers. This was a challenge in the first year for some of our other schools, but we expect they're going to learn from that model and see more opportunities for common planning time in specific content areas in all of our schools. Some things to really keep an eye on as a result of the scheduling change, there's been an increased collaboration within schools and with central support. That comment I just made about Dr. Ronnie Myers-Dobb, they've never engaged in the conversation with master scheduler, school counselors and principal at the same time as a collective group. As a result of that, decisions are being made to support all of our kids. We'll continue to monitor the impact this schedule has on college career and civic readiness index. As you know, that's an accreditation standard. Most importantly, we want to create a schedule that provides students with the opportunity to participate in meaningful work-based learning experiences. We're going to keep tracking data on on-time graduation rate. As you saw from the video, the schedule provides the ability to provide immediate scheduling solutions for students that do, does not require summer school, thus allowing students to stay on track and to graduate on time. We're going to continue to look at opportunities for students to take two levels of world language courses in one year. Initial indications show a potential increase in rising ninth grade students that selected two world languages, world language two, for example, and world language three in one year. We're also seeing in our academy at Tallwood, a desire for students to have the ability to engage in more world language courses. We're going to continue to monitor the and explore opportunities for more advanced coursework in general. As you heard from Mr. Coker, students may have the ability to engage in additional math classes as a result of the schedule. If you recall, you've approved things like Algebra III and pre-calculus changes that we want to have students engage in. A student that takes Algebra as a ninth grader now has the ability to end their academic career in calculus. That was not possible in the previous schedule. We're excited as well to engage in continual conversations with TCC around opportunities for students that can be leveraged in this schedule. More students are having the ability to qualify for dual enrollment as they meet the graduation requirements. So we're also exploring additional course options for dual enrollment to include online as a result of students having space in their schedule to access these courses. It's important to note that increasing opportunities for students must be balanced with the availability of teaching staff, but we're also looking at innovative solutions for that as well. As we continue to leverage the lessons learned, as I talked about earlier, we have the potential to really develop innovative solutions. The expectations of the schedule continue to evolve over time. Quite frankly, I don't think there's ever a time where we're spiking the football and saying it's done based on what our student needs and the current reality of what is out there for our students in terms of education. We're really still in the initial phase of this work and we're going to continue to review the schedule and see if it's meeting the needs of our students, parents and the community at large. I would like to thank Bobby Jamison and his team. They've been heavily involved in student support services with the master schedulers and with the other departments to ensure what are the opportunities we can provide just beyond a four-by-four AB schedule. So it's an exciting time of collaboration where we're really talking about how do we, how do we move our kids forward and how do we utilize our staff effectively? So at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Milnick?
First of all, are we responsible for all that extra gray hair I see on Mr. Wilton's head?
I think there's a lot of people responsible for that, but I'll take ultimate responsibility.
Is there ever a time that a student might take a class of four-by-four where there's a semester break between, between when they can take the next class?
Correct, there is that potential and it's, it's existing right now with several students.
Can you give me an example? So, so I spoke to four classes at Princess Anne Middle School last week and they were all eighth graders and they, this is one of the questions they asked me was, why the four-by-four? And they had a lot of questions and some of it was, my sister hated it at first and now she really likes it. Now she, yeah, so, but they did have a lot of questions and this was one of them.
Yeah, so I, I go back to Mr. Nichols' comment earlier, changed and messy.
Yeah.
People don't really like it, but here's an example that you'll see. A student enrolled in geometry term one, did not have Algebra II trig term two and might end up taking Algebra II trig next year or should be taking that level. So when you looked at Mr. Coker's comments, we're hoping we're going to see more of that ability for kids to come double up behind it, geometry, Algebra II trig. Now they're wide open to other scenarios, but that's an example. The concerns typically come in the math classes
Yeah.
and the world language classes is where you hear them the most, is in those two areas. So we're hoping to adjust some of that math component, but staffing is a concern.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Anderson?
So we really did have a lot of emails last fall from, you know, not only teachers, but from parents as well. And as you pointed out, especially from people who, for example, we had, I remember one in particular where a parent said the child had a world language two and then they almost, it's almost been a year and then they go back into world language three. And, and it was difficult for those. So hopefully counselors will be able to counsel the students to, you know, if you're in, if you're in two now, you need to, you need to make sure you take that either in the, the next semester so that they're not, they're back-to-back. Hopefully the counselors will be able to do that and then catch those because those could be a problem. I could see where, you know, if you were in two and then you go to three and if you had a real gap in there, it could be a problem. But the biggest problem I think that we heard was from the teachers who felt like they were having trouble adjusting because it was new. It was challenging. But not only that, some teachers who had the AB and the four-by-four, they really experienced a lot of problems. And, and so, you know, I was like, okay. So I was glad that, to hear that you said there won't be as many teachers that would have to do the four-by-four and AB schedule a class at the same time. Some may choose to do that. Like we had that one teacher who you saw, we saw on the film, on the video a few minutes ago, who was, seemed to, she enjoyed, seemed like she enjoyed having an AB class and some four-by-four classes, so.
She made an interesting comment on two ends of it that I think are helpful to understand. One, she said squeezing in what she's done for seventeen years in one term. And I think some of that is mindset, right? We're taking, if you really look at the four-by-four, it is instructional days are almost the same as AB. But it is different when you're seeing them every day and it does require that adjustment. So it's uncomfortable when you have to do that. And she was interesting when she said, because many teachers would not have enjoyed two different preps, one four-by-four, one AB, but you found an example of a teacher that saw great value in that as well. So it is a part of teachers just getting more familiar with that process, centrally us working with them, how to change their pacing and assessment practices. Does homework have to go home every night now that you see them every day? How do you utilize the time better? So there's a lot of training components that we look at, but certainly I don't want to devalue the discomfort of teaching two separate schedules. I know that's a challenge
Yeah.
to start with, for sure.
And we also even had a few emails from students who were complaining about having homework every single night because they, they were used to having a day off from that class and then they had a little bit more time to, to get their, their homework. But I think over I think over, but as you said, in some cases, they may not have homework from one, that one, that four by four class one day. They might not have it until homework the next day, but then they might have it on the third day. So, you know, I, I like the fact that we're able to double up on some of these math classes. I think that's going to be really helpful for our students. And as I said earlier, I sure hope that counselors will be able to catch those kids who, who say, you know, I'm not going to take French in the fall. I'm just going to wait till spring. No, you, you want to take it back to back. You want to take those classes and, and keep fluent in those languages.
To your point, Ms. Anderson, I think it's very important that we remind parents to be great advocates for what their children are, are selecting to take. And when they get their course requests to come home, that they really take a look at that and engage with their school counselors as well.
Right.
So that's a great point. Those come home, they get a chance to review it, and now I can engage with the counselor. As Ms. Turnbull-Pallett shared, it's created increased work for our school counseling teams and our master schedulers, but we see the benefit of those opportunities for kids.
The parents can be an advocate too then for that.
Need to be a great advocate for what their child is taking, for sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. So we had a conversation, several as a matter of fact. And so you had mentioned at the time that we should just wait until, you know, we get into the second half of the year. We certainly have seen fewer emails about flexible scheduling. Do you, did your, was your intuition correct that we're seeing a lot more people?
Oh, sure. Yeah. I've talked to academy coordinators, I've talked to principals and yeah, there's still some discomfort, but many of them are finding that the tweaking of lessons is now what they're really engaged in on the four by four. And in fairness, what I heard often was we were also dealing with Canvas at the same time. So there's a few of those components. But right now, what I'm hearing is that they've made those adjustments. They feel pretty good about where they are with their students and they're still thinking about what are the adjustments I need to make next year to best serve my students. I had a great conversation with the IB coordinator today as a result and seeing what she's looking to do. And I said, would you have had that flexibility previously? And she said, no. So they're just getting a better chance to really look and analyze and see and what are the adjustments to innovate along the way. So yeah, I'm hearing positive feedback, but I also know it's still a lot of work to do as, as, whenever you change a schedule, you're looking three years to four years for people to go, I'm really in the, I'm really in the flow here.
But less frustration, you would say overall? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And then one of the, on the things to watch left with the increased collaboration within schools, is part of that having much more, for an individual school to have the ability to make those changes within the school?
Yes, I think that's some of it. I think what you're finding is the school counselor, the master scheduler, the principal, and in many cases instructional leadership team is now much more locked in together.
Okay, good.
Many schools, they had that connection there, but we, we still put some guardrails up because if, again, if a student transfers from Kempsville to Ocean Lakes, there's got to be, we don't want to have them going, well, we didn't offer that on an AB schedule, so you're out of luck for what you did for a semester. You have to sit and maybe we'll find an online VBDC option, which we could do. And that's the other part about collaboration that was really effective was in the, in the November meeting, October meeting, conversations were going on with struggles with kids and one of our individuals from Dr. Schutger's department says, I've got a solution. Just send me the names. I've got a teacher ready for them. They could take it online, support. And immediately those changes were made. So that's the level of collaboration where schools were not always aware what they could do that they found, oh, I didn't know that option was there. So that's been really powerful.
Oh, that's awesome. Well, thank you. Great job.
Ms. Manny?
Two quick questions. So one of the, one of the many reasons I supported this last year was due to students who may be moving into our district mid-year. They're able to take courses from the beginning rather than halfway through, hoping that that will help those situations. Have you gotten any feedback on that?
I have not received one way or the other, but I, you know, I can defer to Mr. Jamison or we can send that to you. I haven't heard any concerns with not having that ability. Naturally, to your point, it's there.
Yeah.
Like you can start this class right now.
Okay, great. And then, you know, I also shared the concerns of the community who were sharing their concerns with the scheduling at the beginning of the year. I, I do hope that that, that those kinks have been worked out for this fall with the schedulers. Perhaps we could get an update maybe this fall after the school year begins on how that process has been improved.
Yeah, I'd be happy to because we're really tracking the, the questions around world language and math. Like how often have we been able to do that and allow that to occur? And then the big one we heard was students losing opportunities because they were in an AP class and there wasn't a, they weren't taking AP via US history and they couldn't find a course to go along with that. And those adjustments are being made. So I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Owens?
Yeah. One of the teachers mentioned that, I think it was a Bayside teacher, felt the students were able to retain better because it was kind of concentrated before the test. Are we providing, are SOLs still only being taken in spring or do we have a, one that would go to the end?
We have a winter administration now and a spring administration. So when you heard Mr. Walton talk about biology and he talked about the students that did not pass the SOL, those were students from this winter that he could then move into that audit course that they are currently in right now, receiving additional support.
Okay, that's wonderful that we're having that SOL back up to when the class ends. And that's for, for all of the SOLs, they all have a winter and spring administration.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
That's awesome. And then the only other, I guess, comment that was coming back or that I had a discussion about was teachers feeling, maybe English-specific teachers feeling that it was difficult for them to provide meaningful feedback to their students from assignments in a timely manner. If they get 42 papers back, and I'm going to see you again tomorrow, I'm not going to have 42 papers graded. And that the speed of the course doesn't may, maybe allow where they used to be able to see where there were concerns, provide feedback, make adjustments before they got to a test. Have they been able to coordinate and come up with some?
Yeah, there's always been a discussion about type of feedback on writing and, and you know, I'm having flashbacks of working for Dr. Rogers and being with English teachers on saying, are you giving the appropriate feedback on what's most important? So we're hearing from others. So to give you the flip side of that, some teachers that are saying, I have smaller number of students and papers to grade. As a result of that, I can hone into the specific area of feedback that I want to provide to them and I can give that to them and allow them more time to develop that work daily. So there's some just decisions that I think the initial concern for teachers was just, they kept looking at a calendar and going September, in January, oh my gosh, I've got to do all this now, where before is September to June. And they weren't thinking of, I see them every day, how do I adjust my practices to develop that work? So to answer your question, there are always, Dr. Rogers Department is always working with them on what's effective feedback and a writing prompt look like.
Great, thank you. Ms. Braylon?
So I've heard a lot from constituents about the flexible scheduling and it was actually, I wasn't on the board, but I was here when it was discussed as a flexible option. And I most certainly, you know, I like the flexibility that it provides, but the constituent concerns about the math and the world languages are also certainly understandable. And I like how we're trying to, you know, help those that are not performing as well, be able to have more options and those that are on the academic middle. But I also do worry that somebody that's in the academic middle, that's struggling through mathematics, makes it through math, goes to their spring semester of high school, then goes back, has no math from spring, summer, then they're going back into math, how that may impact them. And I, I know that you said they can advocate at the counselor for class picks, but they don't really give you the schedule when you're doing that. So I guess I just wanted to kind of put that out there. I know that's something that you said you're already working on, but I had a constituent call me maybe about a month ago and say that their child couldn't get an advanced diploma without taking more four by four courses. Can, is that something you can speak to?
Yeah, wanting to be involved in a four by four course. Your advanced diploma is determined by the actual courses that you take. So I'd need to know the specifics of what courses specifically they were saying they needed to access. Well, whether it's getting the three world language classes, whether it's the additional math courses, or whether it's the social studies courses. So we'd need more specifics on that end. And I do want to address your initial comment because it's extremely valid comment and concern that we all share. And part of this collaboration that we're also looking at and what we learned in the pandemic a lot is schools working together to say, hey, do you have room in a course? And we, we're able to online them in and watch synchronous instruction occur with a teacher in another building. So there's those type of conversations that are going on as well of can a student at Salem High School access a math teacher at Bayside High School because it fits in their schedule? They get a teacher assistant support, but they're accessing it synchronously online and watching Bayside. So there's a lot of that to mitigate that concern that you rightfully bring up. We're just looking at what are the other options that go on there? Because you're right, I can do all the advocacy I want, but if it's not something in the schedule that allows it. What we have seen this spring is in several instances where there's rooms in a class where students have been able to then access that course this year, but we don't think that's the best way to do it. That's why we're looking at that ability to back them up when we can. All of these are, when you're talking to constituents, I think it's always important to remind them, much like when you're in a college course, it's predicated by staffing and numbers that have enrolled in that class. So you're not always going to get everything that you want in that schedule. There are decisions that students are going to have to make and that's happened in every schedule that's ever been created. So there's some of that as well.
So my other question is, it looks like the core classes are all on the four by four model. Is that going to continue next year or am I understanding that that?
That's the adjustment that they're looking at. So I'll give you the example of Salem High School that she talked about, the chemistry class. That's a core class that they created as an AB class this year to mitigate the challenges with their academy students. When we went through this process last year, we were very careful not to, to allow some freedom to the academies because we heard a lot from our IB. So they looked, Salem looked and said, well, to do this, I've got to create an AB chemistry class. And what, so you heard that result of that course was to do that. So you'll see more of that this year, that, which we call that pairing. If I'm taking an AB, AP class, but I don't have another AP to pair with, I need an AB content course. So you'll see more AB offered there. The rationale around that was we just had to be real careful in year one not to put things out there that created a ton of confusion and that were disconnected between schools.
It sounds to me like that may correct some of the.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, for sure.
Difficulties people are encountering. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Weems?
Yes, I am just thankful that I am not helping to put this 2,000 piece puzzle together. It just, I, it's just so overwhelming. But just a couple of quick, quick questions because I know a lot of it has to do with math classes. Can you refresh my memory? What percentage of ninth graders need algebra one?
I do not have that number.
Can you get that to me? Yeah, because I'm, I forgot how many are actually taking it in middle school and how many are not.
I'll just say it's a significant number taking algebra in the ninth grade.
The ninth grade, yeah.
And it depends on your school as well, but there's a significant number.
Okay. All right. And my, if you could get that to us, that'd be great. And then, okay, I'm a, I've got an IEP. I learn differently. I process information differently. I cannot keep up with the pace. Do I have the option on IEP to just do AB and to avoid?
I won't speak to this, what you can put on an IEP. I don't.
I know it's an IEP decision, but, but you know, because like I can't keep up with the pace. Is that an option for?
That's the discussion that I had in there, the adjustments that Ronnie Myers-Dobbs went into. Because what they're finding in many instances is some students need that academic support block all year.
Right.
And others, they were saying they only really need it on the four by four and it's backed up to the one class. So I have a deficiency in math. So that academic support block is really good when I'm taking the math course. I'm not taking math term two, so I don't need that support because it's not, I'm not taking the math class where it's necessary. So I'm now freed up to take another elective or take another course. Or it can be the other way around. Yes, I need it all year long because I have a reading concern.
Right.
And I'm taking world history, I'm taking a social studies class and an English class on the four by four and I have them both terms. I, I need that support all year long. So those are the type of conversations that are going on because we're finding, I think we're going to be hard pressed to find a kid who can completely not succeed in the four by four and can only succeed in the AB. To your point, it's the level of supports that they're provided to be successful in those courses is what they continually look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I have two questions here. So listening to you about we're going to offer maybe some more online options, maybe some more dual enrollment options. Do we ever envision a situation for our juniors and seniors where they can choose only to take courses on A days and then do an internship or an apprenticeship on B days?
We would envision that. There are some regulations and policies from the state. You have to ensure that are there. Now that involves some ability to create some course codes and things such as that to do that. We also, you know, I put the number at 246 that graduated early. That's nice. But we also feel with the dual enrollment opportunities, if we structure it correctly, students won't want to graduate early because they can get those credits at TCC for much cheaper and leave as seniors in June with multiple community college credits that then save some money and it enhances their academic experience. I will tell you an example of what you're sharing is at First Colonial High School and their legal studies academy, their work-based learning experience for those students, they've scheduled a just fourth block class to provide that opportunity to leave on that. But you want, we want to see that globally and we know businesses are not going to invite teenagers in at 7:30 in the morning to do their work-based learning in most instances. So that, I think that's something we're actively looking at.
Okay. And then I have another question, considering also virtual classes, dual enrollment classes. When my daughter was in high school, we used 504 for a later start time, adolescent phase delay diagnosis. And so do we ever envision a scenario where it would be optional for a student to not come first block and be able to do a dual enrollment in the evening without having to go through a 504 process?
Was your question, do we envision that?
I mean, would that be possible? Understanding they would have to provide transportation.
We have many principals that would love that idea. Mrs. Woodhouse, from a human resources standpoint, might have to look at that as well. But we've had a lot, we have many of us throughout the high school redesign process saying, time is such a restrictor now, should it be?
Right.
So how do we remove that time barrier for a high school student that might say, I can access, can I access at 2:30, 3 o'clock? I work in the morning and I have this ability. I mean, that, so those conversations are there, but there's limitations around that. But we do, you know, that's something we're willing to explore for sure.
Yeah, it could give us an opportunity to de- densify a campus and maybe build a smaller school if we only have half the students there on certain days or certain blocks. Just something I've been sort of thinking about for the future. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
D. D. School hours for 2023-24 transportation recommendation. Welcome, Mr. Jack Freeman.
Good afternoon.
Chief Operations Officer.
Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Williams, members of board, Dr. Spence. So as you are all familiar, when we, we've been in recent years struggling with our transportation, our ability to attract and retain bus drivers, you guys made a decision last year to compensate our bus drivers, which has shown a substantial improvement. So we are healthy. And with that as a backdrop, we had to, when we were shorter bus drivers, increase the length of the day in order to be able to effectively transport others. Now that we're healthy, we're going to be able to, we're coming back to you to recommend adjustments to be able to shorten the day. So as a backdrop, our middle school is getting out relatively later and we're trying to get that earlier. And there's some other things that we're going to be able to add back in. Mr. James Lass, our Executive Director for Transportation is going to walk you through that.
Welcome. Long time no see.
Yes, ma'am.
We were, a couple of us were at the bus drivers banquet Saturday night. And so was Ms. Strax.
Very nice affair. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Williams, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. Earlier this school year, our department was asked to analyze the transportation impact of returning to or near pre-COVID school hours. To begin our analysis, it was important to determine or define the question parameters. Okay, so returning school hours pre-COVID, 2018, 2019 school year hours includes for the middle schools. I'll hold on to it this time. So for middle schools, it adds 10 minutes to the seat time per student from six hours and 30 minutes to six hours and 40 minutes, start and dismiss earlier, reinstate transportation services to a zero bell, to all zero bell programs that receive transportation pre-COVID. For our military, our elementary schools, the adjustment to bell times will be, within the new schedule will be minimal impact. So elementary schools, not much change there. It's about five minutes. For high school, we will keep the morning arrival, the For high school, we will keep the morning arrival the same as it currently is. We'll reinstate transportation to all pre-COVID transportation programs, especially off bell, special needs, and out-of-city programs. The, we'll adjust the bell times when possible to accommodate new schedule. When not possible, we'll develop windows to deliver transportation services. Before we begin our analysis, we felt it important to review and provide some historical information from previous school hour changes. As you can see, there are a variety of factors that led to school hours changing from the 2016, 2017 school year to 2018, 2019 school year. The change increased the time between school tiers and resulted in middle schools dismissing at 4:00 P. M. This context will help to illustrate that a shortage of bus drivers was not the only or main reason for the school hour change. Sorry, clicked too quick. This school hour change affected all four tiers and multiple embedded programs, but to keep the explanation simple, we've defined it as the middle school dismissal change from 3:50 to 4:00 P. M. As you can see from the slide, this change was implemented to address several transportation challenges. Late buses, primarily at several of our middle schools on a daily basis. To gain efficiency in routing, use less buses to transport the same number of students. Address arising the school bus preventable accidents and safety-related issues. And to accommodate the transportation needs of new off bell and embedded programs, including those listed. These programs have all been instituted or modified in the previous school years or several years. So as a result of adding 10 minutes to the day, middle school dismissal changing to 4:00 P. M., the on-time rate rose to almost 95% or 85% on high absenteeism days. The number of preventable school bus accidents went down by more than 25%. The total transportation resources needed decreased by 30 school buses and school bus drivers. The number of students transported per bus increased, and more time was available for academy buses to arrive closer to the normal morning bell to perform multiple assignments. So as you can see, increasing the time between school tiers has multiple positive impacts other than resources. When considering our current analysis request, we felt it necessary to include all areas impacted by a change. Safety, efficiency, on-time rates, total resources to achieve our goals, community satisfaction, and more. As you can see from the graph, resource needs increase exponentially as the time between tiers is compressed. Over the next few slides, we provide comparisons and data regarding students transported and operational hours. This slide illustrates the number of students we are currently transporting and the number we expect to transport in the next school year. As you can see, we project a full return to pre-COVID numbers in the 2023, 2024 school On this slide, we've illustrated the actual school hours for the four core school tiers for the 2018, 2019, and current school years. During this presentation, we've been discussing the four main core school tiers. This slide illustrates the complexity of our transportation system. We understand this slide is difficult to read because there's so much information. So we've included a comprehensive list of schools and programs V P C P S provides transportation services for in your packet. As you can see, there are many schools and programs that we provide transportation within and outside the main four-tier operating hours. During the last few years, our department, like many others in the school system, learned lessons from the modified school hours and increased challenges necessitated by COVID. We found we were able to transport almost the same number of students with a dramatic reduction in resources. Currently, 536 school buses as opposed to the 610 in 2018, 2019. We found we could do it safer and stay on time. During our analysis, we also found areas where we could tighten the schedule a bit without sacrificing efficiency or safety. This optimized schedule exists between what the current hours are and what they used to be in 2018, 2019. That optimal timeframe is outlined in this slide and detailed on your school hour handout referred to in the previous slide. As you can see, the analysis shows that we can add 10 minutes to the school day for middle schools to return to the six-hour, 40-minute seat time, make morning arrival time 20 minutes earlier, and dismiss in the afternoon 10 minutes earlier, keep high schools on their current schedule, modify elementary school hours by about five minutes, reinstate transportation services to all programs that were transported pre-COVID. Resources needs will be just a bit more than our current needs, and the impact will be cost neutral. No budget impact. While this option does not fully return us to the 2018, 2019 school year hours, it's very close. Our analysis found a tighter schedule increases the resources, resource needs exponentially. Here are the total numbers. Current total resource needs, 536 CDL school bus drivers and school buses. Recommended school hours, 545 CDL school bus drivers and school buses. 2018, 2019 school year hours, 585 CDL school bus drivers and school buses. And then in the 2016, 2017 school year hours, 630 CDL school bus drivers and school buses. Moving forward, we feel our school hour recommendation is the best pathboard. While we don't advocate for continued change, we will review the impacts of the school hour change in a couple of years and provide guidance. Without objection, staff will implement a communication plan, which will include develop a change plan and communicate these updates to staff. Develop a community communication plan as bell changes affect daycare, after-school activities, parent work schedules, et cetera. Update all online and printed resources. Develop a plan to overcome staffing challenges, recruiting new staff, and retention challenges. The next part of our presentation is an update on the status of the transportation partnership between the City of Virginia Beach and schools for the Something in the Water Festival. But we felt this subject deserved a question break. Are there any items that we can clarify at this time?
Ms. Manning.
You have a question on slide, I believe at six, regarding the transportation numbers that you expect for next year. I see next year you're anticipating to be back to 2017, 2018 numbers, but since then, we've had a reduction of students and approximately 3,500 students, I believe, and it's not based upon projections we've been given. It's not projected that those numbers are coming back, but perhaps a slight decline or leveling out. How did you determine that would, we would be getting 47,000 students in 23, 24, or 23, 24, yeah?
Well, we're anticipating more and more parents will put students on buses. It's one of the main things.
More than in 2017, 18?
Probably so with the gas prices kind of drive some of that as well.
Okay. Okay. I, I think, I think it might still be a little high, but I get your point. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Milne.
Just to piggyback on that, we, we ask parents to drive their kids to school. And so I would imagine that that, you know, after this year, the parents might say, okay, I, I, you know, I did my part for two years. I mean, I live in a, in a neighborhood with a, with a school. I live in Christopher Farms. And so our line is long, and it's, it's a well-oiled machine getting those kids out the door and, and out on the road. But I would imagine that parents might not want to sit in that car line another year.
Right. Well, we're in hopes they will pull them back on the bus because that's the safest form of transportation.
Ms. Owens.
I just had a question about the middle school seat time. And I, I might have been, let me make sure I understand. So middle school students are going to have an extra 10 minutes per day of seat time?
Yes.
But it only impacts middle school. So elementary won't get more seat time, high school won't get more seat time. And so essentially, for our middle school folks, 10 minutes a day extra seat time, 180 days for the school year. So that middle school is going to get an extra 30 hours next year?
Yes.
I'll just pull this down a little bit. It's actually returning us to the seat time that we had pre-COVID. So we've always had the, the seat minutes. So it's putting us back to where we were.
So the minutes that we are currently doing still meet the state requirement.
Correct.
But we were over the seat minutes previously by, I don't know. Do we know how, how much wiggle room we have in over-seat minutes?
I don't have that now, like I can calculate it.
Sure. And maybe that's something, if you are admin, could give us information about what the required seat time is and what our school year seat time looks like. We've had lots of conversations, I think, with the community about our calendar, and if we are above and beyond already, it might be worth having a discussion on. It feels like a hard sell to tell middle school teachers, surprise, you get an extra week of work, extra 30 hours next year, even if it's returning them to where they had previously been.
Yes, so their contract time doesn't change. Right? It's their, their contract time remains the same. So again, we, we cut 10 minutes off where we were pre-COVID, and we're returning to the 10 minutes, adding the 10 minutes. But we can look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
All right, we thought you did. Okay, is that it? Okay. Continue.
Okay, as you know, the City of Virginia Beach event staff has approached our transportation team to assist with shuttle service for the upcoming Something in the Water Music Festival. The plan is to provide service to and from a remote parking location at the amphitheater, just as we did in 2019. Planning is well underway, and you'll be presented with a M O U for this service in the next couple of weeks. Compensation will come directly from the City of Virginia Beach. This will be the same process that was used in 2019. Scheduling details will be finalized by our transportation team by April 20. In this slide, you'll find a brief overview of the shuttle plan. Festival goers who have paid for parking passes will park at the amphitheater. They will then board either a school bus or a tour bus to be transported directly to the festival on Atlantic Avenue. All passengers will be screened and security checks performed before they are allowed to board the bus. V P C P S staff will not be used to screen passengers. No weapons, alcohol, drugs, or paraphernalia will be allowed on the bus. Shuttles will continuously run for the hours designated. For the return trip, passengers will board buses at the oceanfront to be transported back to the amphitheater parking lot. Only those who have purchased the pass will be allowed to ride back to the amphitheater. Transportation supervisors and staff will be on site at both locations to assist with any school bus driver issues, to maintain the schedule, and to ensure a smooth operation. During the planning process, it was important to remember the impact on school bus driver and student safety. No school buses will be available until 5:00 P. M. on Friday, April 28, 2023, and all school buses will end their service by 11:00 P. M. on Sunday, April 30, 2023. All school bus drivers will be paid one hour and directed to thoroughly clean their school buses at the end of each shift. They will search for unauthorized items as well as disinfect the bus. Garage personnel will be available to assist the drivers. Support personnel, including mechanics, dispatchers, and supervisors, will be on site and available at all times while buses are on the road. Thank you for your time. Is there any questions on Something in the Water?
Ms. Anderson.
I just have one question. Who pays for the extra gas? Is the city paying extra for gas?
They have to compensate us for the gas, all expenses. They reimburse.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Martin.
I'm just curious as to dismissal plan on the afternoon of the 28th. With shuttle services starting at 5:00, people will start coming in at 2:00. Anything south of 264, our Witch Duck Exit, Independence Rosemont, Linden Bridge, are going to back up with traffic. Is there any plan to dismiss early, or how are we going to manage our school buses getting kids home in the afternoon, in particular, middle school?
That's a good question, and I would like to refer to Mr. Freeman. I was not here in 2019, so I'm not sure about that.
Let me, let me say real quick before I get in trouble with my other job. I absolutely support bringing in the festival. It's just that afternoon does concern me with getting our kids home.
Yes, so there might be a, a couple of different contexts to your questions. If I get this wrong, just correct me. So the intention is no impact on our instructional day. So that's why we're waiting until 5:00. So we will get done our school stuff and then support them as able following that. Did that answer your question?
No, I'm talking more about traffic volume as concert goers will begin to head to the amphitheater to catch that shuttle at 5:00. I, I think we'll hit gridlock at, at 3:00, and then we've got a 4:00 dismissal.
So there is, there has been no discussion about changing what we're doing as a school division to account for Something in the Water. I will say that from memory, and others can correct me, from memory, that did not occur last time. Now, this may be more successful, and as we move forward, we get more, may get more volume. But at this point, we don't have those indications to be able to recommend that we do anything different with our school day.
Okay. I, I would think that maybe we would send a heads up to parents that there may be a delay on that day, so they're aware of what's going on.
That's fair.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Franklin.
And then kind of piggybacking on that question, Mr. Freeman, you might want to come back. I'm sorry. But do we remember, did we have an excessive amount of call-ins, you know, absentees, bus drivers on that Monday then, following the festival in 2019?
We did not have that last time. I'm going to look back at our transportation staff, and we're going, we, we were good.
Okay.
Everybody, we have very professional drivers.
No, 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 no. I'm just curious if that, if we, we felt an impact from that last time.
We did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brown. Excuse me, Ms. Manning. Ms. Manning was first.
Thanks. So the last time, I was a little hesitant to do this because I was concerned about the safety of our drivers after you have a lot of festival goers drinking all day and then getting on their bus. But I got a lot of great feedback from our drivers, and they really appreciated the opportunity to do it. So I just want to verify that we are going to have the same level of security, if not higher than the last time.
Yes.
Okay. And that the festival has the liability for anything that happens, correct? If, if there's a bus accident or something like that, the festival assumes that liability?
We have tied in our risk management team through all, all the processes. I don't want to speak for them, but that has been integral to the process to make sure that our liability portion has been covered.
Okay. So when that comes back to us, if we can get a presentation on the liability, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning, if I can.
Ms. Manning, if I can just, we are going to have to get back to you for a vote. You did this, you voted on it, and it was April ninth, two thousand and nineteen. The City Council has the M O U going for it next week. They will send it over to us afterwards. You will need to move pretty quickly. I'm not sure if we'll be ready on, on April fourth, but we haven't seen it yet. But that's some of the questions we answer will be in that M O U.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I'm going to make it quick. I know we're all trying to finish workshop. So what time do our bus drivers start transporting students on Monday morning, in the mornings generally?
Hi, my name is Chuck Blair. I'm the routings and analytics coordinator in transportation. A typical bus driver for regular in-zone bus run, you know, usually makes their first pickup in the morning about six forty-five A M for high school run. Some of the academy runs start earlier. When we schedule out the shifts for Something in the Water and we have the late-night thing, we try to use bus drivers to start as late in the morning as possible to try to even it up. So the ones that have to be on the road at five thirty in the morning aren't working until eleven, eleven-thirty at night.
Okay, that was the main concern. I just wanted to make sure that we were transporting the children in our division with a full night's rest, so, thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome.
And now we are on E, forecast of the regular school board meeting agenda topics for fiscal year twenty-three, fourth quarter. Presenter, Dr. Spence.
Thank you. I know we're at time, so I'm going to do this super fast. I'm really going to just go through the workshop items. You guys have this, you can read through information and consent. I don't think there'll be anything in there that will be surprising. The workshops, just real quickly, what we're proposing and based on conversations with you all as well as some things that come up from time to time. Next meeting, an update on policies and regulations around instructional library materials and a briefing on the P P A interim agreement, where we are with that. Detail intends to bring in, in the second meeting in April, an update on the new science standards. Just so you know what's going on with those, those are new this year and there's a new test coming. We just want the board to be aware of that. Also be talking about our mentoring process for new teachers. And then a conversation around professional learning. Both of those would actually be coming through docile but out of our P G I group. We'd like to have a discussion with the board in May about the impact of A I. So you've probably all been hearing about this with generative A I. And we want to talk to you all about where we see some of the opportunities and issues with that. And then also intend to have a literacy update with you on the ninth. Twenty-third, bringing back the enhanced employee input meetings, conversation from H R. An update on the implementation of the equity plan and then another update on where we are with the P P E A. The first one in April, just so you know, is really intended to be more of an overview of timeline and process. And then this will be getting into a few more details with you. And then as we head into June, graduation week, you can see there, you've got a conversation to be had about organizational matters, primarily school board committee assignments. We intend to bring forward a legislative update. Also conversation at board's request to come back about recovery school, an update on Jericho Road, that property. And then a dual-language immersion update. At the end of the month of June, we have asked for a mental health task force update and then a student discipline update to really talk about our year-end data and administrative response to that and engage with you all further in the behavior conversation. So that's what we have. As we've always done, this is a kind of dynamic document. It does guide our agenda development, but if you have specific, rather than necessarily need to dive into it here because of time, if you have specific items that you feel we may have missed. One thing I would note is the governance committee is working up the retreat agenda and that'll come out to you. So you may end up seeing something that we've talked about on the retreat agenda. And then if, but if there's something that, you know, your, your intention was to see that earlier, if you'll just reach out to me and let me know and I'll talk with board leadership and or my team about where we might be able to fit that in. As you can see, these are pretty full workshop topics from now to June. And so we would need to have some conversation about that. But if you'll just reach out to me, we can do that.
Okay, everybody ready? All right, so I adjourned the workshop for our recess time.